You don't really wanna say much on that.
You want me to go get them?
Hello?
We have four, we have four minutes so time in there.
Okay.
No, they're all taken.
How'd the interview go? Did you get the job?
I'll find out tomorrow.
Have a value smile.
Will Dean, Carolyn Williams.
Carolyn wants to speak. No?
All clear?
Yeah. And it's Coach Turner. You wanna have her say a few words at the time before you go.
What up?
Yes, you are.
No, you were.
Yeah, get your pizza.
Do you have another napkin?
I'm checking. I wish it'd be.
You can ask her if she wants to. Just make sure. Put him on the spot to appreciate something, right?
Okay, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much. I'm welcome.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Schaub.
Here.
Mrs. Fink, here. Mrs. Knoll, here. Mrs. Schuman, here. Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Umlund.
Here.
Mr. Kramer. Dr. Gaber.
Here.
Notice of the agenda was properly posted.
Posted according to state statutes.
Thank you very much. Any public comments? Thank you. Uh, we do have several board commendations for boys' state tennis, track and field, and girls softball and golf, but we have only a few students here this evening to get their certificates. So, I will hand this over to Board Member, Mr. Barnes.
So, I have to stand up?
Yes.
Yeah, don't trip over the course.
You supposed to read this?
No, just, just stand like over. Just like we've done.
If I screw this up, don't report it.
You want pictures?
We have three names.
Alright, so softball?
Yep.
You look like softball. I know where you come from. Alright, so tonight then, uh, we have three of the players of the state team. Carolyn Williams. Stevie Jurys. And Malia Newfart. And coached by Whitney over here. And I think we really ought to have you say a few words, what you think.
Sure.
I'm Whitney for TAC, actually. Um, good evening, everyone. On behalf of our softball program, I wanted to sincerely thank our school board, administration, and the entire community for the incredible outpouring of support this spring. From the pep stands to the kind words, donations, and constant encouragement, we felt your presence every step of the way. This team gave everything they had, day in and day out, and couldn't be more pro- I couldn't be more proud of their heart, resilience, and growth. They have represented our school and community with pride, and your support helped fuel that. Thank you for believing in them and in us. Appreciate you guys.
Congratulations on going to state the very first time for Lakeland.
Thank you, thank you.
And doing so well.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda are informational items. No correspondence?
Nope.
Uh, no student board representative's report, and now to the district administrator's report.
Uh, only thing I have on here is legislative update based on student funding. Um, the proposal that's sitting out there waiting for signatures and agreement. Um, revenue limits, there is no increase in general, uh, school aid. Um, there is a $325 per pupil increase in, uh, the revenue limit annually. Uh, but since there's no general school aid added, that dollar amount will fall directly on local property tax. Uh, special education categorical aid, um, increased 229 million over the biennium. Um, looking to reach thirty-five percent reimbursement in fiscal year twenty-six. Currently, it's just barely under thirty, and then a goal of thirty-seven point five in fiscal year twenty-seven. Um, the categorical aid does help the district. Uh, we transfer money from Fund Ten, General Fund, to Fund Twenty-Seven, Special Ed, to cover, um, uncompensated unreimbursed expenses. So, any increase in special education, um, limits our, eliminates the need for the significant transfer from Fund Ten to Fund Twenty-Seven. Uh, high-cost special aid, the goal is fifty percent reimbursement in fiscal year twenty-six and ninety percent in fiscal year twenty-seven. And mental health services at the state level, there's a net reduction in ten million for school-based services. Um, in addition, categorical aid, the omnibus motion from the Senate GOP is to provide, uh, two hundred fifty thousand in GPR in twenty-five, twenty-six, and five hundred thousand in GPR in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and one-time funding and a new appropriation for grants for Lakeland Star Academy. Uh, requires that this, the DPI to distribute, um, in each fiscal year of the biennium to LUHS. Um, that was in the last biennial budget and it was vetoed. So, it's out there now. Um, no action on that as of today.
Can I give something in the district administrator's report? I tried to email it to you, but it wouldn't let me.
It's not flat, no?
Yeah.
It's a flat standard.
On behalf of the Board of the LUHS, thank you.
Thank you. What fun. Um, it's been, um, an honor and a privilege, um, to be here for the last, was it ten months? Six plus four, whatever it is. Great potential in this school. Um, I've been visiting with administration. There's huge staff potential for growth. Um, what I've shared with Jen and Levi and Katie is the amount of growth I've seen in staff in their philosophy and shift of thinking towards the importance of adult behaviors and the impact on student learning has been incredible. Um, they've been, uh, focusing on PLCs for the last couple of years. I brought, uh, professional learning communities into Colby in twenty-ten. It took four to five years to get where they're at now. And it's a major shift in thinking in the way adults do business in the school. So, they should be complimented, and I just wanna say, um, whether I'm here or not, the prognosis of where this school is going academically and culturally is positive. And, um, we have an incredible administrative team. Um, Jamie and I have been having those same conversations. Um, and like I said, I think things look very positive moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay, next, the board agenda planner reports. Exit surveys.
And I just told President Umlund, and thank you for the nice gift. I forgot. The exit surveys are sitting on my desk, gift office. I didn't have time to do them. Um, if the board would like, I can email a PDF of those, um, just so you can read, uh, who they come from and what they were. But typically, it's a summary of comments anyway, but I'll share those directly with the board. I apologize. So, you were just so nice to me, and then first thing that agenda I screw up.
Okay. Uh, next is report on the curriculum changes after trimester one. Two trimesters, uh, the trimester system this school year.
It's a, it's a wordy word agenda.
Yeah.
I know.
It's a real great.
Uh, so, for this year, I just have, um, one course that I'm, I'm updating on, and that's our Algebra Essentials course. We added that this year for the first time. It occurred only in trimester one. And it was very intentionally placed there in an effort to ensure more students were in grade-level content as freshmen coming in. That's one of the things that we've been looking at in, uh, multiple curriculum areas and talking about with staff is the importance of students being successful in grade-level content, so they can get where we need them to go during their course of time at Lakeland. Um, we had one section of Algebra Essentials this year. I, Lisa had uploaded the, um, summary of that, so you saw that in the board packet. There's some data there, um, just outlining the number of students who are in it. And, uh, for our first time with it, it was ultimately successful. For many of the students who had that opportunity, they successfully completed algebra in the course of their freshman year and are on track to move forward with grade-level content as sophomores. So, um, we're gonna continue to watch, um, the numbers for pre-algebra, and our goal is really for that course to be exceptionally minimal. Um, and then the other offerings in our math department that we're watching are the LGO A and B offerings, which again are below-grade level content in math and hoping to see those numbers decrease in the future as we move forward this way. The only other segue I'll add to this is that, um, we're now replicating that process in ELA for the coming school year, so we have, um, ELA Essentials in trimester one for our incoming freshmen, and then that, that will move them into grade-level, ninth-grade ELA content, um, by the end of the year, so. Good start. We're feeling good about it.
Very good. Thank you.
And that's just, like, I guess the other thing I would just add is the, our interventionists who we added a couple of years ago, they are the ones who are delivering the instruction in these courses, and, um, that's just been really a critical piece to the process, so.
Just one quick question, Katie. I was very hands-off with my senior, and I know she had the trimesters. When you talk about math students who are performing below grade level, is that something that is offered in all three trimesters? Or is it?
Well, there's a couple different, there's a couple different ways that we support students who are needing intervention. So, this was one opportunity to catch students as they came in in their freshman year. So, the trimesters really allowed us to do this, 'cause it gave them one trimester of kind of like a, a booster, right? Like a review of that pre-algebra content, and then some specific skill instruction, individual and small group, to get them ready for algebra in trimester two and three. Um, as opposed to being in pre-algebra for, for two trimesters, right? So, that's one piece of it. So, the essentials courses intentionally placed in trimester one. Um, we do have other support that students receive through our interventionists during the other trimesters. And then we also offer credit recovery options in each trimester as well. So, if a student, as a reactive measure, if a student ends up not passing a course, there's an opportunity to help them recover that credit.
Okay, and that would've been much, much more difficult under our old quarter system.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, especially the essentials, like, I, I just feel like the way that that worked out, giving us that extra chunk of time, it worked very, very well.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Katie, with, with the intervention, if a student doesn't pass the class, but passes, let's say, sixty percent of that content well, but doesn't do well in the others, and they didn't pass, do they have to take the whole class again? Or do they just work on that forty percent that there's?
Uh, well, we have criteria for the percentage of the class that the student has to pass to completely retake versus being able to recover credit. Um, and then the interventionists work with them on making sure that they've met the, like, our goal is that with intervention and recovery, they're working on the essential standards that the student needed to be successful in that course.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, um, can you give me a feel for how many students? Yeah, you said fifteen were offered the course, twelve did fine. So, of the entering students, only fifteen needed support in the first trimester. The other, other group were grade-ready?
No. So, so this, in this past school year.
Right.
Um.
You can do both for me.
Boy, like, I'm not gonna be able, I'm thinking pre-ouch, like, I don't have a number on the top of my head. But I guess what I can-
He was in here, I think.
Maybe it was.
The, I thought there was something about pre-algebra.
Oh, it would be here. So, so this year, twenty-seven percent of our students, incoming freshmen.
Yep.
Took pre-algebra, so that's the below-grade level course. And then nine percent, that's the fifteen, we moved them.
Got it. Now I understand. Thank you.
So, they were the fifteen that did algebra essentials and algebra.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, we're looking at getting more kids that support and reducing the number of students in pre-algebra, which is the below-
Now, I understand. The way you phrased it, thank you.
Okay, good.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, board committee and board liaison reports. Any board members attending these seminars or workshops that they would like to share? Okay, charter school meetings. Uh, we have a charter school meeting tomorrow night. There was a Lakeland area consortium meeting last week. Uh, Mr. Walker had, uh, a situation that he couldn't attend. So, what was just basically discussed for ten minutes was the success of the golf outing as well as the, their ability to raise one point two million, um, for the charter school. And I got to work on the course. I, I tell you what, there when you see people on the course, and sometimes, you know, it's fun, it gets a little carried away, but these people are just so genuinely nice. And during the auction, uh, the charter schools artwork did amazing. And then just the, the donations that were given and the people who bided on it, it's just, I mean, I know there was one table that bid over five hundred thousand dollars for, for prizes, and it's just, it's just, just amazing, that whole setup, so.
The artwork was-
No, it was not my table.
The artwork was thirty-eight thousand dollars from the ten pieces that went.
That's awesome.
It's, yeah, it is amazing.
I think they do a nice job of entertaining the golfers throughout the round.
Oh, God, yes.
And by the time the auction comes around, it gets to be quite a bit of fun. I know a guy had bought a seventy thousand dollar pontoon boat that doesn't have a lake house.
Now, he-
He's, I think he's trying to sell it.
When I went and grabbed the ticket to give to, uh, the people in front, and he looked down and he says, "I don't need a pontoon boat." He just, just bought it, you know, so.
I know most of those guys at that table. He told them, "Now, I have to call my wife and tell her we have to buy a lake." But it was, it was fun. Great to see that. And the graduation piece to me is the key to that whole outing, that time that's taken to show the people who were there to support it, you know, the, the success stories. These kids getting up to speak, it was impressive.
Yeah, and that, that, uh, Native American gentleman graduate, and just his cold sense of humor, I mean, he made everyone stand up and applaud after he gave his, his speech. So, I, I mean, that's, just kinda brings tears to the eyes. It really does.
Lisa, anything?
No.
Okay.
Uh, policy?
Did not meet. Going back to the meetings tomorrow night, I, Lisa's asked for this before. Is there any way we can get at least an audio recording of those two meetings?
You have to, I mean, that's, it's fine.
The, the meetings were not streamed last, last time.
Uh, no, I, I don't need video and streaming. I just, just an audio recording of the meeting?
He's talk, talking the charter school meeting?
Charter meeting for tomorrow night.
So, very-
Oh, yeah, we can set it up. You need it?
That's, that's gonna be a-
Absolutely.
I think it needs to be a-
Transition center.
A, a permanent, I, I guess Lisa can, more strongly than I can, but as an entity of the group.
Absolutely. We can set up.
Of the organization, I think we should have a document that accurately reflects what happens at those meetings.
Absolutely. And so, we can, uh, uh, I can connect with, uh, Savell to properly set them up.
A thirty-year-old handheld tape recorder would be a great start.
They usually have something going. They usually have a recording going, Jen. I don't really know.
Yeah, they did.
Is it Zoom or what is it?
Well, depending on who's not there. And you're trying to do a Zoom for those people. We can do a recording of the Zoom, and it could just be audio, um, recording of that. I can, we can meet tomorrow and figure that out.
We can provide us a little household.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Policy?
Uh, did not meet.
Can we have a date for the next policy meeting?
No, we didn't, because it was transitioning, and then Jamie had to-
Okay. I just wasn't sure, like.
Do you do meeting doodles?
Excuse me?
Do you do meeting doodles?
It's only Lisa and I.
And Sean?
Well, Sean was sort of available if needed, so.
Should we put that on Jamie's task list?
Yeah, Jamie, let's set up a policy meeting for Lisa and I.
Okay, and next, consent agenda items. Anything that needs to be pulled?
I would like to pull seven point three ten.
Do you want it to be an open section under action or a closed section under personnel?
I guess you better do closed.
And then we need to pull seven point three three. Dr. Gaber?
Uh, yes, please. Or I can abstain from the entire section, whichever you prefer.
Well, we can just pull that.
Seven three three?
Seven three three.
I don't put that on-
I don't think that's accurate. Are you trying to pull Higgins?
Yeah.
Okay, not seven three three. Please pull-
Okay, thank you.
Seven three eleven. Seven three three is-
Thank you.
And you were pulling seven three seven?
Ten.
Ten, okay. Okay.
Anything, yes.
Sean, if we could pull seven three fifteen.
Fifteen. Under action or closed?
I think it'd be under action.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items other than seven point three ten, eleven, and fifteen.
So, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schaub.
Yes.
Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman.
Yes.
Did you say yes or no?
I said yes. Sorry.
Okay, sorry.
I'll keep my hands away.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Umlund.
Yes.
Dr. Gaber.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Okay, now we can vote on it separately, correct?
Definitely going to action. One is seven three ten.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the hire of the, of the special education teacher case manager, which is seven point three eleven.
I'll make that motion.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Umlund.
Yes.
Dr. Gaber.
Abstain.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Schaub.
Yes.
Okay, then I need a motion to hire LUHS head girls basketball coach.
I'll make the motion to approve, select that hire.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, uh, Levi, if you could just tell us, uh, how this, how you see this working out. I mean, I know how busy you are in your job, and I don't have a, I mean, I used to work with the youth girls basketball over at Badger the Day when Brian Mackey was doing that. I know how busy he was as, uh, girls basketball coach with them. And I, you know, and he ran over into the summer, did summer stuff too. I don't know if that's what you're looking, but if you could just give us an idea of how this is gonna work.
Simply put on it, Dean, I love our kids, and they deserve, um, great people leading them in all areas of their life. And right now, we don't have anybody else to step up in that area, and I don't want a big, large group of kids who really need some leadership. And I'm willing to inconvenience my overall schedule, because it's something that's very valuable to me, in helping our kids, but also it's valuable to my family. My wife was a college basketball player. My daughters love the game of basketball. We have people in this building that are working at, to try to build the time to help that. And I'm hoping to help recruit some people that can join that process for us, because it was very much a single And I'm hoping to help recruit some people that can join that process for us because it was very much a single little family endeavor moving forward and I want to involve more people in this community who have an interest in this game, so. Feeling my passion to do so can, can help provide a quality opportunity for our kids.
How, how do you see, like, away games when you have to leave early outside?
So the majority of the girls' basketball games don't leave early before school's out.
Okay.
Um, there's only a select handful, um, most of those start times are five forty-five for the JV games and so school is well done over that. However, our administrative team has talked a great deal about it, we've had conversation and we've all agreed that we have each other's back throughout the course of the process to, to pick up wherever it's needed. I asked that question right away, I said that right away to our admin team, I didn't want to inconvenience them at all and they all told me that I need to keep quiet because they'll take care of it, they'll have my back, so.
Okay.
I can add, Levi and I had a specific conversation about balance of work, basketball, and home life, um, it will consume time. Um, I'm comfortable with it, um, I've seen Neelsville's superintendent, um, coached basketball for twenty plus years. Didn't seem to harm their fifteen trips to state or whatever it was, um, and I've worked with administrators, it's definitely requires balance, planning, uh, scheduling, and a supportive team, but I'm okay with it after our conversations.
Motion to approve seven point three fifteen.
Second, I had it first.
That's, we already have that.
Yeah, we had, yeah, we just have to vote now.
You're getting double the votes, Levi.
And, and thank you for taking that on.
Thank you.
Yes, no, I appreciate the question, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Noem?
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Umlin?
Yes.
Dr. Gabor?
Yes.
Mr. Borts?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Fink?
Yes.
Okay, uh, do we table the treasurer's report since we don't have any?
What about the, what about the, oh, we don't make the, don't you, never mind.
No, that's part of the consent. Do I have a motion to table the treasurer's report?
You have two motions there, so.
Motion to table the, the checks and procurement of transactions?
Sold.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion to table the district administrator, business manager, accounts, payroll specialist, authorized users to access all district accounts at a credible bank financial institution.
Um, your business manager and district administrator will change July one, your accounts and payroll specialist is new. Um, without this motion, you have no signatories as of July one.
So we don't table this one, this one?
You can have this, it's a separate motion, you can approve.
Okay. Okay, so then I need a motion to approve this.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. I need a motion to approve the non-employee benefit insurance to cover property, cyber, auto crime, workers' comp, et cetera, as presented.
I'll make that. Second, discussion?
Discussion?
I have a, I know, I don't want any names, but the workman's compensation for office employees to have a modification jump the way we did and the wording to say as a result of a bad loss. Did we have somebody get hurt here at school that we had a huge workman's comp claim that caused our modifications to go up?
That would be, I'm not aware of specific individuals, but that's the only way your mod factor goes up, is you have a huge claim. Um, and your mod factor is gonna go up, which is gonna increase your premiums.
Which concerns me, we're a logging company and I know what my modification is and for this to be what it is, something happened here.
We have a staff member that, um, had a major knee injury as a result of, uh,
Okay.
some training at the beginning of the school year for sa- school safety.
Okay, perfect, that, I, I, something had to happen and I didn't.
Yeah.
I didn't know how bad it was, so, okay, thank you, Levi.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Umlin?
Yes.
Dr. Gabor?
Yes.
Mr. Borts?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Fink?
Yes.
Mrs. Noem?
Yes.
Okay, next is to approve the printer contract, I need a motion to approve the five-year EO Johnson printer contract as presented.
Two options.
Yep, there's two options.
Okay, I don't.
Uh, pose eight, do you wanna?
Do you want me to share?
Yes. Yes, please, because I don't have those here.
Alright, so, uh, our printer contract is coming for renewal for five years, uh, I gave you kind of, uh, a recap of what the scope of it is, our current service provider is EO Johnson. Their scope of their services involves the server, Papercut, which is what manages, uh, all the printing and you will put their, users put their their printing codes and also Printonista, which is the metering part of it, the metering system which triggers all the ink, uh, reordering, plus thirty-five assets across our organization, including Star, uh, Howard Young, and Transition Center, so our printer, uh, organization goes to different locations. Now, in your package, you have two options in what to decide. And in, the options, I'm gonna walk you through it, that way we made a decision, an educated decision of what is the best fit for our organization. Now, in the first one, in the table, option one, that basically is a one-to-one replacement. That means every device that is at end of life classified by our service provider said, hey, this is done, is not going to be part of it, it needs to be removed out of your environment, it will be replaced, right? Those are based on that assessment and that includes the clicks, the printouts from the graphic department, alright? That is that cost associated, that is a monthly price of forty-eight hundred dollars, alright? And in a total year, it is, it is extrapolated over five years of the contract for two ninety-one K, alright? Which give you a delta of forty-seven thousand dollars above what you currently do. Now, in option one, it is the one-to-one replacement with the investment of that new graphic machine, that machine is dying. It's coming to an end of life and as a board, everybody in the organization has to make a decision, do you want to double down, invest again? Or you wanna just keep writing it? So, in that cost, based on the new RICO machine, which is the replacement, again, one-on-one replacement and also the replacement with the new graphic department, uh, equipment. That one, it is five thousand one hundred and fifty-four, alright? That's the cost monthly and extrapolated over five year, three oh nine. Now, the second option, it is a consolidated version, right? It is a reduction of all the printing machines that are inside our organization, put it in strategic location, right? And without absorbing all the prints from graphics, so those prints has to go, those clicks have to go somewhere, it just don't disappear. So what happened is, the way we, it was calculated is, if you consolidate it, you have to go and put one million clicks somewhere in our organization, so that is the absorption, that is the cost of four thousand dollars, uh, for that monthly payment. Uh, and from a, a total year cost extrapolation to forty-four. Now, the last version with the consolidated version as well includes a new investment over there. It is a consolidated, a very, uh, uh, lesser amount of printers across our organization, but you have the graphic equipment replacement and that puts you at forty-four hun- hundred dollars. That is a decision that the board has to make because if you invest, um, uh, a device in graphics, that has to be operated by one person. Right, so it goes hand in hand, you cannot make a decision without, you put it in, it has to be staffed. So that's why, um, making sure we are very, uh, transparent on that. Those are the four options on it, this is a state contract, which is the best price from a HELOC market standpoint and that's what we use from the state of Wisconsin, go ahead, please.
Um, you have listed their amount of variance to the, okay, to the lowest payment, so you're making that comparison to option two with the clicks from VarioPrint?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not compared to what we paid in the last year?
No, and that is a really good question, our current, our current monthly payment is thirty-four ninety-three, that's our current pay. Now, that contract was negotiated five to six years ago, things have increased, so now you're getting new equipment because some of them are coming at end of life and also price has gone up. Those are, uh, we're basically comparing apples to apples, which is HELOC to HELOC from one contract into a new contract, I just wanna be, uh, try to be transparent about that.
I don't know, I don't know, you can answer this, but what was our, you were saying if we go with the option for a replacement printer for the one that we have there, then we also have to have a staffing number on that, what was our FTE or what was our?
There's a proposal, currently it's a one point oh full-time position year-round in that graphics department, um, there'll be a proposal, um.
I saw that on them.
Yep, it's on the agenda to shift point five of that position to, um, IT.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, for some reason I thought that twenty-seven was the half for that, for that position for an annual, is that not right?
That the cost?
Yes.
I would say it's more than that.
Okay.
Uh, that might be the salary, then you wanna put benefits on top of that.
Okay. So, if I can ask one more question?
Yep.
I know, I'm a little bit slow here, so if we went with the option one or option two with the clicks of VarioPrint, we do not replace the current printer there? So therefore, we don't have to have that halftime FTE? Is that correct?
Uh, let me, let me digest this.
I know, and probably.
It is, it is a good question.
So I'm just looking at the, not the highlighted green part, but just the highlighted option one clicks with VarioPrint and option two clicks with VarioPrint, that is not giving us a new printer in.
Over there.
Over there, so therefore, we do not have an FTE for those two options, correct?
Correct.
Or would we still need to have?
We have not been investing.
We're talking machines only, because this doesn't include the FTE cost?
This is, yes.
Okay, that's my, well, he had mentioned that there, we need an FTE for a new print machine, so that's my question is, if we go with those options that are in white rather than the ones highlighted in green, do we still need a halftime FTE?
I think.
If you are investing in a new machine over there.
Correct.
The, the white one doesn't, the white one, the white one does not invest in a machine over there.
So therefore, option one and option two highlighted in white under here would not require an FTE?
Terrible, yes.
Okay.
Yes, terrible. All this cost does not include staffing or virtual costs, I just wanna make sure we are only talking about equipment.
And the equipment is owned by us at the end of the lease?
At the end, that is correct.
So the machine that's currently in there could stay its end of life.
Yes.
But the machine could stay and run as long as it continues to run, it's end of life, parts are hard to find. Um, you're talking about, do you replace that machine at that cost plus staffing it? Or do you keep that machine, reduce the staffing and start to phase out that position?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know if you see this on yours, but on the document that was handed to us, that new VarioPrint would be totally ruling out that old machine. It would be replacing it with a completely new machine, but we would still need staffing for that completely new machine.
Yes.
Correct. If you bought a new machine.
If we went with the green highlighted bars.
Correct, that was correct.
But if we went with the white highlighted bars, then we don't need any staffing hypothetically?
You would maintain the current machine and start to phase it out?
Correct.
Correct. Correct, but would not need the staffing for it.
The full-time staff.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, we, we listened to a number of staff members that did not want us to get rid of graphics.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, at that time, uh, it was halfway through the semester and we were told that graphics did two million prints.
Yep.
Okay. And that the cost savings is anywhere from five to ten cents a copy compared to distributing it out to the other printers where the teachers would have to send the jobs, print it, and then go pick it up.
Okay.
So at two million copies, at a savings of five cents, that's, that's a hundred thousand dollars there. And so if we double that, you know, if they do four million print jobs over there, uh, I mean, it, it does pay for itself and then it frees up time for our staff and that's what we heard from our staff.
Okay.
Is that when they, at the beginning of a unit or a class and they have these projects and things that need to get put together, they can give it to the graphics and it's, it's prepared, you know, it's, it saves them time, you know, they only have one prep now and then it also saves us money long-term, so I mean, I, I can see the value of having, you know, you know.
The machine in there?
A machine in there, even if we reduce it from full-time to halftime.
Okay.
It's still getting the jobs done for our staff, I mean, that's.
That is the discussion that, that needs to happen, to be honest.
So.
Uh, that is a good point.
Lisa?
So what is the cost per copy then for the new VarioPrint as opposed to the old machine?
So, okay, that is, uh, I have so appro- approximately, let me see. That machine, the way it was budgeted is, we're talking about two hundred and nineteen thousand, uh, black and white pages per war. So we multiplied that by four, it put us around a hundred and seventy-something, which is the output of that machine, anything above that, we're looking at, uh, point, uh, forty-four cents, uh, a printout over there. That's how much is the overage, I don't have all those numbers, Lisa, I can dig them out to give you an comparison. I'm pretty sure the new machine will cost less because it's newer technology, like old devices will cost a little bit more to operate it because cars and, and weren't here, but I can find that out if, if, if that's needed.
Ross?
So, obviously, this group is charged with making sure that we're good stewards of taxpayer money and that's what we're doing here, it just seems to me like, I personally, because I don't deal with these machines, I don't know who's printing, you can explain it to me ten times and you're still gonna know it a lot better than me. So for us to sit here and take a decision, I would like to, to hear from the people that work with this stuff all the time, what your recommendation is and then tell us why that's your recommendation, I don't know if that's Steve or Jose or Levi or the crew here, I for, for the board to sit down here and look at this, we would be here to do it right.
Okay.
All night, in my opinion.
Okay.
So I mean, is there a recommendation from the team that says, okay, these are our options, we recommend this, but this is why we recommend it? We all know, we talked last meeting about things we need to fix with our building and money and taxpayer funds and all that. It's just common sense to me to say, rather than us rehash the specifics of this and that, to hear from somebody here what you recommend.
Yeah.
And why?
When does this have to be signed?
Where, uh, August is when the new contract goes into effect, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we could have Rich Tragier come in and present like he did last time, yes.
We've been, we've been talking about this ever since I've been on the board, which isn't all that long, it might be, what, three years or maybe go ahead before. But, you know, yeah, we've had, the math team came down here and Gary Olson had a book this thick. Well, maybe not, maybe that thick, I don't know, it was, it was pretty thick. And if we would have had to go out to print that thing, I don't know how much would it cost, but Gary had all the numbers and it was quite a bit, if we'd have gone out, house, out of the house to print it, you know, we can do it here, costs a lot less now. Is that gonna make or break us on whether we make the decision one way or the other, but I think Ross is right, we might wanna, I can just hear one more time about where, where this, where this would take, I know there was a lot of history of us doing print jobs for nonprofits outside of the school.
I know there was a lot of history of us doing print jobs for nonprofits outside of the school, and so we took in a little bit of money on that. I don't think there's too much concern about taking business away from somebody outside of the building if we're doing that. You know, so, uh, could it bring in a little bit more? Now, maybe it could. I don't know. It's a lot to sort out, and you're right, we're not gonna do it in one night.
And I do know that, at that time, they said that we did a lot of print jobs for all the local elves. And then I don't know if that's still being done, the local elementary schools.
From Rich talked to me the other day, from what he said, it's primarily like one or two, but not near as much as it used to be, but there is still some of that happening.
And do we build them?
I don't know that.
Okay.
Well, that was, that was one of the problems before is that.
Right.
The billing was not getting done. Yeah, so we, we could've been making, taking in more than what we were because billing wasn't getting done. So if we were to put in a new one and, and keep it, you know, keep it running like we've been doing, we'd have to figure out how that's gonna happen.
Okay, you're gonna table it?
Are we allowed to ask Adam a question?
Okay. Yeah, it's up to the board.
Adam, can I have your opinion, please, since you're sitting there?
Yeah, hi, everybody. It's nice to see you. Um, uh, the print shop is huge for teachers. Uh, it saves us a ridiculous amount of time for any type of large production. Uh, color is through the roof in the amount of time that it takes and effort that goes into it. I can personally tell you as, uh, somebody who worked with our freshman focus, those math books, they're spiral bound. So not only is it the printing, it's the printing, it's the poking in the holes, and it's adding a spiral bound to it. They would be incredibly expensive to do outside, and every single math class uses something similar to that. It's a problem. It's essentially a workbook that we have created so that we don't have to purchase workbooks every single year with new problems and that kind of stuff. So, um, I, I can tell you this, the teachers use it a lot. All you have to do is walk in there and there's print jobs. Um, when Rich prints something, he puts it on a set of shelves, and every day you walk in there and the shelves are not full, but like there's always print jobs in there every single day. So we use it often.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Can we table it, Pat?
Uh, you can, but can I just, you asked for administrative recommendation.
Yes.
Her, my recommendation would be you do not replace one-to-one devices a hundred percent, cause we have devices that still have user and there's life in them left. I think you need to replace all of your devices that are near end of life, which is in the option two. I would then not replace your new graphics machine because, and continue to use it in a reduced position with graphics for twenty-six, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six. That gives you time to decide because you're gonna also run into, not only will you need to replace the machine, you're gonna need to replace staffing and personnel. So do you hire someone when that person decides to retire? Because that's something that's gonna have to enter into the discussion too. Um, tabling it for now is fine, but thinking into July on what you wanna do. I'd replace the machines that are end of life. Keep the graphics and keep a point five position in there through twenty-five, twenty-six, and then gives you more time to think about what you wanna do long-term.
So on our spreadsheet or on our information sheet here in the spreadsheet portion, what you're saying is to go to the revamp, revamp of current printing structure. Option two with clicks from vario print or?
Correct.
Okay, so keeping the old machine, which really ultimately isn't it changing costs, variance, or it, cause you said that, well, it probably is. You said it was right around thirty-five hundred dollars a month currently, so we add about five, six hundred dollars per month by sticking with that option from what our current costs.
But it's also the least expensive option on the proposal.
Yeah, I wanna clarify something. The option one, uh, clicks from variant, that doesn't invest over there, that also, that, that is the one-to-one.
Mm-hmm.
Steve, it replaces the ones that are end of life and keeps the ones that are still good.
Oh, it does?
Yes, it does. The option two with clicks from variant, that is a consolidate, that is a reduction.
Reduction in number of printers.
Yes, like, yes, we are maximizing on the first one, everything that is still have life on it. Just wanna make sure we are clear on that.
So if we went with option two with the collection of vario print, that's taking out end-of-life printers and not replacing them, correct, Jose?
Replacing some, but just redistributing some while there's.
On which one?
On the second one, you're saying that it's taking out, that's just only, it's reducing the number of printers we have because you're taking out the end of life.
You have thirty-five across the organization, and so you're gonna end up with like twenty-five.
Okay.
That is the consolidation. Yep.
And how will that impact our staff?
They will have less access, uh, uh, of, uh, of printers next to, let's say, in their office. There's gonna be more central locations of printers strategically across our organization.
There's a printer in my office I've never used.
Example, a printer in his office, a printer in my office. Uh, Nathan has a printer. I don't know. I have never used it. That's three printers right there. So I'm like, there's five printers in student services. There's printers left and right. It is a decision. There's some people that are going to be uncomfortable. There's some other people that will love it. It is a decision that we all have to do together. That's, that's why I'm presenting it like that, very generic.
Yes, Ross.
Levi, any input on the printing situation?
I, I think there's a lot of different ways we could take that. Um, there's never a decision that we wanna make to burden our staff, like, um, so I always think it gets pitted that way sometimes when we have these conversations like that, we're trying to, to burden our staff by doing this. But I also know I said earlier last month that we talked about, or at the Cal meeting, we talked about how we have to look at reducing our spending. And so as we look through that, or we go through in this process, this is what is the equity of spending in that? Jose went through this with, with our, our team this morning, or this afternoon, we talked about, you know, different, the different costs of everything. We wanna be cost-effective and efficient. Um, if it doesn't directly negatively impact kids, I think those are decisions that we need to make. And I don't know what the impact would be, cause it's a, it's a speculation, right? It's something that we'd have to, we have to guess as to what impact it would have on kids if staff had to make more copies on their own. And so I can't accurately say whether it would be a yes or a no, as to whether or not you'd have negative impact on kids, but we don't wanna make a decision that would do that. I can tell you that in my experience in teaching in the education field, I've never worked in a school where somebody had made copies for me, so I've had to do that as a portion of my job. However, the nature of, of working in education has constantly changed, and I haven't been in a teaching position for seven years. And so post-COVID, I know life has become more hectic for our staff as well, and so I couldn't accurately say whether or not I would've felt that burden or not because I'm not in the classroom doing that. So I just, I feel like right now for us, as we wanna put it in front of the board with the options of what the costs are, to make an informed decision, uh, as to what direction we wanna go in terms of how we spend our money. And I think you said it before, is being fiscally responsible comes down to having those decisions and making that. But I know in the past as well that our administration has made a recommendation, and then we've changed course on that at the board level and went against that recommendation, and it's cost us social capital in our building for making a recommendation as to what we feel would be fiscally responsible in that process as well. And so I just feel like at this point in time, right now, it's like we're presenting the options that we want the conversation to be had by the board as well.
I just look at roughly eight hundred dollars a month for, to have a little more centralized printing, less printers next to a desk. That's what I see here.
Yeah.
And is that feasible? So I mean, hit print going like this, I hit print five times and then I go down, I don't know how far I'm walking. You know, that's why I can't take this decision. That's why I'm asking you.
Yeah. It's highly feasible, right? Like, right now, the majority of our staff send their stuff to Rich in graphics. Graphics is not located next to every classroom. So to make the, the walk down to that process to have somebody else run those for you, we can reduce the printer load in our building. I a hundred percent agree with that. Yes, Ross?
We have follow-me prints too. So when I'm working in my office, I print to follow. And I could go to any printer in the building, I enter my code, prints out all my print jobs, all in one thing, pick them up. So mine go out to the office by Lisa, and I'll go out a couple times a day and just get my printing. So with, with your recommendation, it would be centralizing some printers, keeping the current graphics machine for another year to see, you know, hopefully that thing stays alive. And, and then reanalyze, you know, as we get a little bit farther down the road. And it's, it's, it happens to be the most economical choice also, and sounds to me like, like Levi and maybe others feel that we can get by with that, rather than having printers in all these offices.
Yes, it also eases into, cause you're gonna look for, I, you're gonna look at a recommendation to reduce that position to halftime. So that will give you twenty-five, twenty-six to again reevaluate. Do you need a full-time position in there? Do you totally eliminate it when that person leaves? Do you look at replacing it? Uh, the machine, adding it back to a full-time, just gives you more information to analyze that kind of a decision. It's actually in a pretty good spot right now, just the combination of machine and staffing.
So I'm in, I've changed now. I'm in a position where we don't, wouldn't need to table it. For me, I would support that recommendation.
So supporting, I, I agree. I would support option two with the clicks from vario print.
Yep.
You know, cause I, I do know that when I was here, we had centralized printers, and we had one in the business department that all English came and used. Um, we could only print so many. They wanted the larger print jobs to go to graphics because it was so cost-efficient. And, and that's why they said, plan ahead. It's gonna save us money if we do that right. You know, instead of, you know, me sending, if I need a hundred copies and I can only print twenty at a time, instead of sending it five different times, you know, you can get away with that, but then again, it's more expensive to send it to those printers than they have it done at graphics.
But Ross's recommendation, it still involves your graphics.
Right.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Until the machine dies.
No, I was just providing some history.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure I answered correctly.
So I'll make a motion to go with option two with a vario print.
Second.
Discussion, yes.
I, I have one. So Jose?
Um. Oh, okay. Clicks from vario.
Yep.
Okay, yes, sir.
So I, I was looking at the machine list, um, and I'm guessing, so it's very blurry for me when I pull it up. I can't read it.
Yeah, it's horrible.
So I'm guessing that's the list that's gonna tell us which copies are gonna be removed. Like I said, for instance, maybe one's coming out of the Steve's office and maybe, is that what this is? Is that what that list is?
Can I see?
Sure.
Trying to see what you have.
Oh, you're talking about at the bottom, the option?
Oh, yes, that is, that is something. Yes.
I don't know.
Yes. That is, yes.
It's coming from the back there.
That's what the exercise was.
Okay, so we can't read it.
And it has two options and.
That one I'd like to table.
Yes, so we went through each one of the inventory and based on clicks and how much the output of that.
Deep-clicked into something, no idea where it's.
Sixty's the bottom.
By, by, by and large, that I can't read, I mean, I can't read it if it's small. I can't read it if it's big.
Yes.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Yes.
So what's your third option, Ross?
So we have a, a motion to accept option two with clicks from vario print, and we have a second.
Excuse me, Sean?
Yes.
Um, I, I'm in support of the motion. I, I think the, the question for us to carry forward is, how do we wanna look at the bigger picture? Um, this is not, you guys are talking about it for three years. We talked about it fifteen years ago. Levi said, there's no school, no school district with seven hundred students has a print shop. I mean, it's just, it, it's a, it's a wonderful thing. They make a wonderful product. But when we challenge administration to save costs, and they look at comparable schools, this is gonna float to the top of the list. And it's great if we're making our teachers more efficient, but we need to sort of think about how we wanna balance that going forward. Cause the last thing we wanna do is cut Levi's legs off where he goes out to the staff for two months saying, gee, we're gonna change the way things are gonna be printed next year, and suddenly we say, no, it's gonna be the same thing. And he's spent some political capital trying to save money. So I, I think tonight's cho- decision is a good decision, and I support it, but we have to think about if we need different information from administration in order to make tough decisions or not. Uh, cause this one's been on the, this one has survived several near misses in the last, I mean, I can talk to this as well. So.
I think that would go back to our board goals though, when we do our, you know, five-year, ten-year plan. That, that should be part of that.
Okay. Okay.
And overall cost, I mean, it, it's a trade-off. Do you want something that's convenient or do you want to revamp the science wing? You know, I mean, those are the things that, that, the discussions that we'll have, but I think that's also our, you know, planning on our board goals.
And I agree with you, Dr. Gabor. We do need more information because of the past. We've been told that that utilizing graphics has paid for itself because of the savings of, you know, doing big, you know, paying half a cent a copy versus five, six and higher.
We're getting to Adam's point. If, if you're turning out a couple hundred workbooks and teachers only have one prep, that's an, if, if any of you have done this, sort of the machine that does the cutting and then you have to spin the spiral through, that, that's a special skill. And yeah, that, that's, I think, so again, I support it. I think it's a good trade-off. My concern is the next tier up, which is how does administration give us the, the correct way to make the decision to Ross's point, um, so that we can support it?
And it would be nice to know what it would cost if we went outs- outside the school to print all those booklets compared to what we pay here. I mean, that's, you know, getting the financial information that we need. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Omlin?
Yes.
Dr. Gabor?
Yes.
Mr. Boards?
Nate.
Mr. Shab?
Yes.
Mrs. Fink?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman?
Yes.
Okay, next is the student handbook changes. And were there changes?
Uh, they were minor. Um, yearly updates. Um, I don't even remember. There wasn't anything really significant.
I remember.
Words or language, some language things.
They, they, what we were given, I, the date didn't change.
Yep.
Names didn't change?
Yeah. And I didn't see, anything that we got, I didn't see any, any, any green or changes.
In green?
Yeah, semester, trimester, that kind of.
So do, is this something that if, if we, if we don't have those changes in there, should we, can we table this the next month or?
They're inherent. I believe the changes are in the packet.
Not the, not the one that I read.
So student handbook twenty-four, twenty-five, the names are all the old handbook. All the four numbers, contacts are all old.
Were they edited? Were they edited, stringed?
No, none of them.
No, no.
No, not at all.
I mean, I'd look for anything that was green or yellow that showed there was a change.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't see anything.
Right.
So until those changes, can we table?
I think maybe just, is it the wrong thing was, I don't know, looking.
I, I think we just have the wrong attachment. They, they're there, they're there. It was all minor changes, so.
It's just the wrong attachment, maybe?
I think, I don't know.
I think it's just the wrong attachment.
Cause. Well, I, I guess we would like to see it. I.
I mean, it's a foregone conclusion. We're going to do it, but we can see, is it a problem if we delay it to the next meeting?
No, I don't think so. No.
We just have to have it done by July, correct, in order for it to be ready for the stuff for, to go out in August, correct?
Do you have a printed handbook, like an agenda planner?
Um, that's our, that has already gone to print, to print, so.
Oh, this handbook has?
No, the agenda planner, we remove major boards and the student handbook from it just so we can print. Soon as we've, we, still, we had been approved like, like in May to June-ish early, and we've just always pushed it forward, so we've removed parts.
But does it create any hardship for you just to approve that formally in July?
No.
Okay, so move to table.
Do we even need a motion to table or just, just table?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, motion to table, I, we have a first.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay, it is tabled.
Okay, hold on a minute. You're in this, I'm, you're in it right now. This is what I see. I don't know why it's not showing up, but they're there.
Can we move on?
Yep, alright.
Uh, next is to approve summer IT technician rate change.
This is our summer student workers currently, um, they're, I believe fourteen dollars an hour. This would boost their hourly rate to fifteen, which is what most kids can make every night.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sorry. Okay, who had the motion?
Lisa.
Second.
I think it was Dean or Ross, sure.
Mr. Omlin.
Yes.
Dr. Gabert.
Yes.
Mr. Boards.
Aye.
Mr. Schab.
Yes.
Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Mrs. Noam.
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, next is to approve the creation of a head girls wrestling coach for next year. This is based on numbers.
Um, our girls' numbers have exploded. Is that a good word? Uh, Adam is here to answer questions.
It's the fastest growing sport in the state of Wisconsin. It's not okay to talk.
Yes, go for it.
Yep.
Okay, uh, it's the fastest growing sport in the state of Wisconsin. Um, to put in perspective, the reason why we're asking for a head girls' coach is this season, uh, was our first year where girls did not wrestle boys at all. Uh, we were able to get the girls about twenty-five to thirty matches, putting together ten events before, um, the regional and sectional competitions. Um, I was the head girl, girls and boys coach. Um, three times this year, I had to go Friday and Saturday. Friday, I went down to Antigone, coached the girls, go back up here with the girls, took the bus down with the boys and coached the boys on Saturday. Um, for regionals, I went to Wausau, then I drove up to Hayward. Um, then the following Saturday for sectionals, I went to Shawna and then drove back up here. My assistant coach took the boys over because we were in Amory and they went over the night before. So I got back here at like ten-thirty, eleven, and then was in a vehicle at four-thirty in the morning to get over to Amory. Um, with the competitions happening on separate nights, which is a goal that we have because girls need to have their own separate competitions. Um, it's gonna continue to go that direction, which is too much to ask for one individual. Um, we do have a potential staff member that has shown interest in being that, so would also be a potential teacher, um, that would be taking over that position should you choose to create it, but there is a need for a girls' coach to expand the program and continue to grow it. Um, and then also just from the logistics of travel, um, because they're gonna be traveling on nights that the boys don't travel.
And it leaves your head coach, your head boys' coach at school.
Head boys' coach should be with the boys' team.
With the boys' team instead of traveling.
And I've always been blessed with great assistant coaches that are more than capable of running practices and that, but I I'm doing a disservice to to potentially both programs by not being as competent as I could be.
How do our numbers look for the girls for next year?
So we started the season with eleven last year. Uh, we finished the season with five because it's so new. A lot of kids are trying it out right now. Our youth program is continuing to build strong. Uh, we have, uh, two middle school girls right now that will be coming out in the next two years. In addition to five girls that are guaranteed to be back again this next year, so, um, it's continuing to grow. Uh, and like I said, it's a, it's a fastest growing sport. The biggest thing is it just needs eyes. Um, a lot of people still believe it is girls wrestling boys and they don't quite understand that it's, it's only, the WI, WI has mandated this next season, girls may only wrestle girls. They cannot wrestle on the boys' turn, around the boys' season.
Okay, then I need a motion to approve the creation of a head girls' wrestling coach.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tom, Dr. Gabert.
Yes.
Mr. Boards.
Aye.
Mr. Schab.
Yes.
Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Mrs. Noam.
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Omlin.
Yes, and thank you so very much for taking out the additional responsibility this last couple of years with accounts.
Our principal is a good model. We do what we have to do to be able to serve our kids, so.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Okay, next is to, uh, approve a motion to shift a half FTE from graphics to IT.
Um, just a little background in this. We had a, two requests that came in within days of each other. Um, Jose has requested some support in IT. Um, he had his personally plus all of his student workers, so he's got a new person plus all new student workers, um, in the program, and he is trying to get, keep caught up with the transition. Uh, we had a resignation in the LMC, um, which was just approved on your personnel report. So the goal was if we're going to have an add in FTE and, um, IT, how do I do that? That's costly. Um, had some conversations about different ways of doing that. Uh, lots of conversations with Jen. Jen had a halftime special ed opening. Um, so we're going to move an internal transfer to the halftime special ed with that person halftime in the LMC. Um, talking to our graphics person, who was totally okay with it. I was impressed with his attitude, by the way, um, of backfilling the other half. So we'll have two halftime people in the LMC. Um, and actually in working with scheduling, um, they were coming up with some pretty creative ideas. Uh, well, if Jen needs her person, I can go here and I, they were just kinda brainstorming and coming up with it. By taking that halftime FTE and moving it in here to backfill an open position, that creates a halftime FTE. Um, and we can shift that to IT for Jose to fill that position.
Okay, need a motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Boards.
Aye.
Mr. Schab.
Yes.
Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Mrs. Noam.
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Omlin.
Yes.
Dr. Gabert.
Yes.
Okay, then a motion to approve the creation of a board ad hoc facilities.
I would say it's not ad hoc.
Okay.
Probably should be an ongoing committee. Because I think getting rid of the facilities committee is probably what may have created some issues and deferred maintenance along the way. Um, has this committee start to put themselves together, um, from the recommend you develop a ten-year facilities plan. Once that plan is in place, it will continue to evolve. And your facilities committee would be your eyes on the ten-year facility plan. And what do we need? Where do we need to fund it? Um, what's the rotation? Um, all of the detail that goes into that. And I'm assuming, um, Dr. Kep will have Joe, um, pretty much on that committee with him. Um, when I've done a committee in the past similar to this, it was almost co-chaired where I did it with my facilities director and we sat down and kinda prepped the agendas and went through a lot of things together before the facilities committee.
And then how many people are you?
I would say three.
Three board members?
Yes. And you shouldn't volunteer for another one.
Well, I'm just.
I'm just kidding.
Dean, Ed and I served on the facilities committee, but that doesn't mean we have to be part of this committee.
I wasn't actually on the committee. I just attended.
Well, that's, that's right. I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct. You just attended.
I'd rather see, if the three of you wanna do it, I'd rather see you guys, you were there for the conversations. Because right now, the people in the community are seeing that we're creating another committee. And they're like, well, what did we do all year then? Are you just gonna blow us off? This is upsetting people, so we got to keep it rolling, that it's a continuation and bring this, not meet again and come back in three months with your recommendation, but finalize where you're going with this because we can't let what those guys all did the work of, just, well, it was nice having you, but goodbye.
Absolutely, right now. I agree.
I think it's gonna be a progression of taking the information that you had in your meeting and actually formalizing it into a plan.
A board approval plan.
Correct, which isn't.
Because what we have right now is a community recommendation.
Right. Well, I nominate you three.
I'll second that. I'm very bad.
First, do we need to just approve the board ad hoc facilities committee and then?
Uh, not ad hoc, you're saying.
Not ad hoc.
That's true.
Yeah, we should probably have a motion on that.
Motion to approve a new board.
So motion to approve a new committee of.
Of board facilities or facilities committee. Okay, roll call, please.
Is it, okay, so is it a facilities or building and grounds? What?
I would say facilities committee.
Okay.
Wait a second.
Second was Dean.
We probably don't need a roll call of this.
No, nobody.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay, motion carries. And then we need to designate m- membership.
Lisa made a motion.
I made a motion and I seconded that.
Are you, discussion, are you comfortable?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
But we should just check with Josh too at some point to see if he'd want to be on the committee. And if he would, then maybe you wouldn't have to be, unless you're okay with being on.
Yeah, I I would rather, you know, since I went to every meeting.
Okay, alright.
You know, I have already some ownership.
Okay.
You know.
And Josh can still go.
Right.
He can still attend a few hours.
Maybe Josh could take part, take my place in policy.
Well, listen, you could make four members of this committee if he really wants to be on it, right?
Yes.
Sure, I'm saying, be careful that he will be.
Yeah, and anybody, anybody can sit in at any point too if they wish.
I think the difficulty with policy, which was with Bo, with Barb, is that he's so far away. It's almost easier having a local person if you're doing the seven fifteen AM rather than, I'm just saying.
Yeah, and she had to leave like real early.
Correct, so, so then we did ask, I've already asked Ross for certain things, so somebody else could work. Or Dr. Gabert, um, um, policy or Lisa, but I think it needs to be somebody closer than Josh, because I think that was a difficulty with Barb.
So we have the motion for the three.
Yes.
We have, have a motion, uh, to approve the three members of the facilities committee. Do we have a second?
It's Heidi.
Heidi, okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post, okay, thank you very much. And then we'll get in touch with you to start setting that up. Thank you. Um, next is to approve the board goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Um, I drafted some goals following our retreat. Board retreat, uh, what I had was, uh, three goals, develop a long-range strategic plan, um, develop a ten-year facilities plan, which would then become part of the, um, facilities committee, and a board goal to improve communication. And then I had subcategories, board with administration, administration with board, and community engagement. Um, honestly, I think our social media, um, could be kicked up a notch. Um, any of the positive comments that you hear about schools, they're out on social media. Um, we just need to do a better job of sharing that. Um, and it needs someone to make that a focus. Um, when it becomes a board goal, um, it tends to be in front of you in extra time.
Okay, we have a motion to approve those board goals.
I'll make it. I'll make it.
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I can just name her off then.
Dean, call the question.
Well, you know, this is another one where we've been going round and round on this, but and, uh, it's great to say, let's jazz up our social media presence, but nobody has a plan on how to do it or who's gonna do it, so we haven't, you know, until we hear something like that, I don't know how that's gonna happen.
Well, there's data and metrics you can apply. Um, how many posts are we putting out? Um, I believe in any kind of strategic plan, once you get to that, it's a monitoring cycle. Um, what's the data? Um, how many posts did we put out last month? How many posts do we put out this month? How many posts? Then you can start to use that data, why, why not? Um, my learning with social media, because I'm not a social media kinda person, is you can designate one person to be the social media post person, but they need the content and the data from others. So you need multiple individuals, multiple staff, uh, coaches, advisors, teachers, just sharing information in snippets. Uh, but it comes to one person, they, it's easy for them to take that information and push it out. Um, when you start talking about schools and school reputation, um, social media is what you need to be doing. There are, there is technology and I would visit and rely more on Jose, but you can create one post that'll go on your website. It'll go out on Facebook, it'll go out on Instagram, and what's the other one? Twitter.
Yeah.
So, and you're just doing it once and it just goes out and you're just sharing all of the good news. Um, my perception of Lakeland is you're doing a lot of really good stuff. Nobody's hearing about it. And when something bad happened, it's that quirky thing, then everybody's talking about it because there's this vacuum. You should have seven positive comments to offset every one negative thing. Negative things do continue to happen. Um, kids, adults continue to make dumb choices. Those things get out, but let's always remember all of the positive stuff that's going on in the building and start getting all of that information out too.
I think we talked about this at the retreat, didn't we? Uh, because I think I brought up an idea, because we have heard from other schools and and have talked among ourselves about whether or not we should have a PR person on staff. And when I brought that up, somebody said, we, we already do, but isn't, that person isn't doing that work. And so I guess is, and then maybe the next thing we do is, Jamie gets on board, is track that, track down and. And, uh.
That would be reviewing job descriptions.
I, I, I don't, I don't. Seems like that kinda stuff happens here once in a while where somebody's hired for something and they slide over to something else. And whatever a big plan was for hiring that person in the first place gets lost. And here we had somebody here, have somebody here for that purpose and they're not doing that work, so, you know, maybe we should take a look at that.
And to Steve's point, I mean, we moved here from another district. I'm still getting all of their posts. And all the reasons we moved here have been validated after she just graduated. But what they put out, it makes them just look like everything is great. And we don't have a lot, right? We don't have as much as we probably should, to your point. And I think, because if we can just improve that and tell the good news that we have, we'll be in a lot better spot. I get five posts a day from Colby. Yeah, yeah. And the kindergartners are doing this and freshmen went on this trip, but this was this, uh, when you think of all the cool places, um, and the cool things we do, and just a picture and two sentences, um, Voyager, where they go racing, um.
Transition things.
That's, that's cool stuff, yeah.
Do we have anything on our website about the softball team?
No.
I get something from Lakeland.
Athletics.
Athletics, but, you know.
But even that doesn't have scores. You don't know who even won the game.
And and the other comment I just made quickly is that I've been on our website a couple of times. I, I really don't like our website. I, I had it all the time just finding our directory, staff directory.
Or our current calendar. I mean, it, it's there. It's just all the way you have to go through.
Jose, I'm sorry, you've, uh, maybe you didn't have anything to do with it, but I, I.
No, yeah, uh, there's a company that, uh, designed it and all feedback is good. Whatever needs to be changed, we just make those adjustments. That's it. It's just, uh, how deep we wanna do it. That's all there is.
There's a whole science behind it. How many clicks you have to get to get to different.
There has to be. Exactly, it is. Do you wanna put the resources and somebody dedicated to the graphic design of it? Exactly, it is, do you wanna put the resources and somebody dedicated to the graphic design of it, that whole there is.
On Jose's PDF, one of the things that he took on with looking at the website was he wanted to make sure things weren't more than three clicks away. And so he did a great job of like analyzing this with the company that does this and not testing your skills, Dean, but like when I click on the website.
Well, you, you can, I don't have skills, when it comes to this stuff, I don't have skills.
When I hover, when I hover over the about us, I see academic calendars and staff directory right away, like on, on one of the taglines above the top, right? So it's like.
Just not going to the right spot.
So, yeah, but so like, but what I'm saying is before, our website was horrible, you had to go through like a tunnel to get to something and it was like seven clicks away. And so Jose's done a great deal of work trying to get us closer to that, but it's still as clear, like, it's like, it's not quite as easily accessible yet as needs to be. Like when I look on here, I haven't looked at our direct webpage, but I'm like, oh, there's a tab for graduation on here, well, that's over, we should probably remove that tab right now. It was placed on there to prep people for graduation, but like, there's just some things I think on there that are, that acted better, but feedback is always good for us, so we appreciate that.
Okay, if we have a motion and a second to approve the twenty five, twenty six board goals as presented, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post, motion carries.
Sean, can I just say one thing here quick? I, I just do wanna say that Jose, in like s- six, I'll say seven minutes, figured out how I could get school emails on my phone tonight before the meeting started, so he's got skills.
We'll keep them.
Yeah.
The skills are, do you know how to get them?
Did you get that, Trevor?
It's on our recorder.
Okay, I need a motion to convene a closed session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one. Any purposes of considering employment, promotion, compensation, performance evaluation of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, considering financial, medical, social, personal histories of disciplinary data of a specific person confirmed with legal counsel for the government body who is reviewing oral and written advice concerning strategies to be adopted by a body with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved in, board will consider personal items moved from consent agenda, agenda items moved to action information, review and pending litigation, district administrator evaluation performance, and then we convene into open session, I need a motion to move into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay, we will go into close and thank you so much everyone for coming.
Going directly.
That was a near.
Yeah, if you wanna take, go ahead.
Yeah.
It was a near miss. I didn't figure that.
If not, maybe just try to work.